Well, she likes the fairest.
Oh.
Oh.
Good evening and welcome to the regular school board meeting for independent school district eight thirty-three. It is Thursday, April eighteen, two thousand nineteen at six thirty P. M. We are in the district service center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota, and one point oh is roll call and we'll have Kelly read tonight since Ms. Dana is on vacation.
Pat Driscoll.
Present.
Heather Hirsch.
Present.
Sharon Van Leer.
Present.
Katie Schwartz.
Here.
Michelle Whitty.
Here.
Ron Caff.
Here.
Tracy Burnett.
Here.
Two point oh, please stand in, join me in pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine and justice for all.
Three point oh is the approval of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I think I heard Heather first. So Sharon moved, Heather second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Four point oh are district highlights. That will be an agenda item on our April twenty-fifth meeting. Public comment will also be an agenda item on our April twenty-fifth meeting. Six point oh are consent items. All consent items are considered routine and non-controversial by the school board and will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, but prior to the meeting, board members did have the opportunity to review each of the items on the agenda and could have requested that any of them be moved to an action item. Since we don't have that this evening, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Sharon, second by Pat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven point oh are workshop items. Seven point one, we get to showcase our schools and we have Conna Clausen from Woodbury Elementary and Erin Shadick from Hillside joining us this evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much, School Board Chair Burnett and Dr. Jacobus, the rest of the school board. I was a little nervous coming because all of a sudden I realized we have Lily Hirsch mom on the school board and so she always talks about Hillside and things like that, so I wanted to be sure to do us justice today. So hopefully I can do us justice. So Hillside Elementary School, I have to click and hold. Two things, and it's behind me.
There you go. Long time.
This is like working in an elementary school every day. Yeah, you want to click for me? Thank you. Geez, Louise there. Okay, so our mission at Hillside Elementary School is we support the positive growth of our Hillside community to produce lifelong learners. What I chose to highlight, it may be a slight review because Laura Lushak and I were going to go from Gray Cloud together back in November. Her and I planned in the summers together and our theme this year was building bridges. It starts with me. So part of where that came from is our work with Dr. Holly, our work through courageous leadership and really looking at, it's not just to know our students, we can know information about them, but it's to know them on a personal level. And really, Dr. Holly talks about building and bridging, so building those bridges. Again, it's not just about knowing information, but it's learning about them and from them to create an environment where our students feel like this is their home, this is where they're successful. So we, at the beginning of the year, do something like this. So every single student, every single staff member, and by staff members I mean from the cooks, the custodians, the teachers, the paras, we all do this symbolism. It starts with me, building bridges. So we put our picture in the middle and it has to be a picture of ourselves happy. So a lot of people choose summer things. And then there's questions around it. So if you walk around our hallways, you can see these all around our hallways and learn about our students, learn about our staff, because it asks things like, what am I good at? What do I want to be better at? Who's in our family? Because I think an important piece about building bridges is learning who's in our family, because that tells us about who we are, where we go home at night, what I'm thankful for. So it helps us know students, things that kind of get them going and excited about everyday life. So this is something that we have done the last two years. Each year, we've kind of changed this theme and like I said, this year was about building bridges, taking it to the next level, really. So all staff members have a chart where they have a list of their students, whether it's homeroom students, case managers have their list, E.L. teachers, specialists, so meaning like FIAED, art, media, they have a list of twenty-five students that they target, that they feel like they need to know better, and then they write down personal information that they learn about those students. And I'm not talking about their reading level, I'm not talking about their math level, I'm talking about, I have a baseball tournament this weekend, I play third base, and so on Monday, it's a reminder to check in with them. Or, you know what, my mom is leaving for a while and I'm really nervous about it and so somebody needs to connect with me. So those pieces, I feel like, really bring us together as a staff and really help us know our students. If you want to click the next page. So I wanted to highlight, for me, building bridges is about knowing our students. When we see students, their faces, I put them in our newsletter for the staff so that they can highlight them in their classrooms, around our hallways. We are continually working to learn about each other and grow as a Hillside community. So I took a quote, one of our students put a quote up on our social workers board just a couple of weeks ago. He was down in the office, there was things going on, he wrote on her board, even if I am gone from Hillside, this will always be my home. And for me, that is what I want in the school. Yes, we teach our kids every day, but you need to come to Hillside and know that it is your home, that these four walls for these six hours of the day are a place where you're safe, where you're connected, where there's somebody in the building that you can go talk to, that you know will know your story. So what I had, one of my teachers, who's a lot more techie than me, Amy Albertson, put together a little video montage for us to end, and then we'll have questions, so.
How do we do that?
It's linked to the picture. So one thing to highlight that I didn't, at the end, there was the bridge. And so my art teacher, Shannon O'Pichka, every year I tell her kind of what our theme is going to be, and then she incorporates every student participating in the artwork. And so every single student in the building has a brick in that bridge that they did during art class. So that's in our front hallway and has the plaque talking about building bridges. So with that, there was a very important student that was missing from that video. Oh, well, she wasn't? Oh, good. Oh, good. Oh, see, I was so nervous and I watched it and I was like, oh my gosh, Lily's not in this video. How did that happen? So with that, questions?
Yeah, well, that was wonderful, just very, very lovely. Can you talk a little bit about, do you have a lot of English language learners, just a little bit about the demographics of your school?
So demographics of Hillside have changed over the years, as many buildings have. So we have, I would say, I believe we're at about forty-five E.L. students, and then we have about twenty-five percent diversity, similar, we're about thirty percent free and reduced lunch, a building with pre-K of four hundred and eighty students, right around there, kind of fluctuates, but right around there. So we've been slightly declining enrollment, but.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say you both.
I wanted to say, you both have the best jobs in the world. Being a principal was the best thing I've ever done, and I really enjoyed it. You can tell how happy those children are, that you're doing a great job. Good for you.
I don't have any questions. I see you all the time. So that's a bonus. But I can, I can fully attest, one, I'm confident the example of my mom's leaving and I'm sad is, comes from my child. But no, I can fully say my daughter's gone there from kindergarten and she's a fifth grader now, and so every time we go, it's like, oh, it's our last choir concert at Hillside and some, most of you, I went to Hillside also, so it's very exciting for me to be back in the building and to be with the building. And so we have really, really enjoyed the time there, and this is the last little sunstar I made this summer with Lily. So yeah, we'll miss you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really do, I got emotional with that quote because I really do see us as a family. I call us our Hillside family. And I've been there eleven years now. I started at twenty, it's okay. But it really is a place that I spend a majority of my time, and so it's a place that I want to be, and that means that I want everybody who walks in the door to feel the same way.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Conna Clausen, principal at Woodbury Elementary, and I'm really excited to be here tonight. One of the kind of interesting things is not only do you get to learn a little bit about our schools, but it's really fun. It's been fun working with Erin, presenting tonight, because we as principals actually get to find out some different things going on in other people's buildings, and that's been a really neat part of this. So I'm glad we get to share it with you, but I'm glad we get to share it with each other too, because it's a great way to get new ideas for future years. So tonight, I want to focus a little bit on the character education that we do at Woodbury Elementary. We each year have a theme and some great Woodbury Elementary staff are in our audience and they are sporting our, because only when, because there's only one you, make the world a better place. And that was our theme this year. We have an anchor text for our Hopes and Dreams book, and similar to what Erin said, they're building a bridge. We have an outdoor classroom where every student painted a rock and it became part of the rock garden, to really personalize that space for them and make it, make it a part of them. And, you know, we use a lot of different techniques and different strategies at Woodbury Elementary, including responsive classroom, our culturally responsive teaching, our avid strategies, because we have a really big push to know our kids as well and building those relationships and really making them leaders of our school and helping instill those characteristics that make them really positive role models at Woodbury Elementary. So I want to share with you tonight a little bit about the character education pieces that we do. We decided to go on kind of a three-year journey. So students would experience these themes twice over the course of their elementary career, and these character education pieces really support our work with social, emotional learning and helping build that leadership capacity in all of our kids. Not only our fourth and fifth graders, who we want to be and expect to be our role models, but our kindergartners and first graders too, because they have a lot of leadership abilities, and we want to start honing those skills early so they can become our future leaders. So in two thousand, so two years ago, our focus was CARES, and CARES stood for Cooperation, Assertion, Respect and Responsibility, Empathy and Self-Control. And at that time, we were doing all-school assemblies where all kids would come to our gym, which promoted community, and we were trying to get across some of these really important messages. We had superhero characters that year who came and introduced these concepts at our assemblies. So we had characters like Captain CARES, Admiral Assertion, we had the Respect and Responsibility Twins, Emperor Empathy and Sergeant Self-Control, and it was really fun. We came masked and, of course, didn't expose our true identities to the kids, and that was a really fun way to get some of these concepts across to kids. Then last year, we introduced the concept of PAWS, and PAWS stands for Positive Attitude, Act Responsibly, Work Hard and Show Respect. Again, we did this through all-school assemblies. We introduced some, some reward systems with PAWS tickets and PAWS praise calls, where we're drawing names and recognizing students in different ways, making positive phone calls home, so really trying to promote that culture of empathy and kindness with all of our students. One of the things that we found though, when we were talking as a climate team, in the all-school assemblies, when we were all together in the gym, it was really hard to actually use it as a teaching model, because we really wanted to get these, these ideas across. And so what we decided to do, we still have two all-school assemblies each year, we have an opening ceremony where the whole staff and all of the students wear our yearly T-shirt, which is a pretty amazing feat to have everybody in the same T-shirt, T-shirt on the same day. And then we have a closing ceremony at the end of the year, but we moved to a virtual assembly. We have a news, daily news program called the Wolverine News, and it's broadcast live throughout all of the smartboards in the school, and we decided to try that as a way, we're not all together in the same room anymore, but we can be more purposeful about our message and engage kids in a little bit different way. And what we found is, is kids are paying more attention and we feel like the message is getting across a little bit better. The other pieces, we have a number of students at our school with sensory needs, lots of them wear headphones, assemblies are generally overwhelming for them, and we really wanted to look to a way to be able to include them. Some of our students weren't even coming to the assembly because it was just too much. So this is a way where every student at our school can participate. So the last piece up there is that with those mentor texts that I'm going to show you in a minute, is we tried to make this really easy for teachers, and we're doing it in an interactive read aloud way, and then we have activities for teachers afterwards that they can follow up on in their classroom, and I'll show you what, kind of, a hint of what some of those look like in just a minute. So this year, our two thousand eighteen, nineteen emphasis is on the six pillars of character, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring and citizenship. And you can see below some of the mentor texts that we've used, they're all picture books. Also, at the same time, we had an opportunity to partner with a company called Apex Leadership Team, and they actually came into every single classroom in the building. We had them at our school for a week, and they tailored leadership lessons based on what teachers felt their classrooms needed. And they, they would do it in a Socratic seminar method, so the students would circle up and they'd gather round and they'd talk about whatever leadership idea that they were talking about, and it was really based on the needs of that particular classroom. So in these, our trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness and caring, our texts were Katie Wu, The Big Lie. We had a really fun one called Do Unto Otters. Lots of fun plays on words in that one. What If Everybody Did That for Responsibility, It's Not Fair for Fairness. Have You Filled a Bucket Today for Caring? Which, if you've never read that, it's all about being a bucket filler and how we can fill each other's buckets with compliments and kindness. And citizenship is at the end of this month, and we don't want to ruin the surprise for that one, so that one's yet to come. But then, so with each of these texts, there's one per month, we outlined some really simple, easy-to-do activities that teachers could do in the classroom. So I get on the Wolverine News and I do an interactive read aloud, and it's really kind of funny, because I'm talking into a camera, which is really strange, because I'll say, okay, turn and talk, and then I'll wait. And the nice thing is, is I've got a group of kids in the media center who's really close by and I can hear them talking, and they're talking and talking and talking, and I'll say, okay, I say bring it, you say back, and so I'll say, bring it, and then I wait. Bring it? And I wait. And the great thing is, is, you know, I've asked teachers, is this working? Are they engaged? Are they talking? And they are. So that, that's been a really, it's been really fun, and we've, we've talked about going on location and doing some different things in the future, but, but it is interesting. I have a new respect for newscasters. So, but anyway, with the easy-to-do, with the easy-to-do activities, we always tell teachers, you know, if you have a better one that fits better with your class or something that you've done in the past, please, by, by all means, go ahead and do that. But it really gives them a launching pad with that mentor text to be able to talk with their classroom, really in-depth about some of these leadership, leadership lessons, character traits, really to get them to think about being better people, because we know if those social needs are met, those academic needs will come. This year, we've had a really positive response from students and staff. We weren't sure how those virtual assemblies would go, but I think kids are more engaged, they're getting more from our messages, and it's, it's easier to manage and we, they're just getting more out of that lesson than we could in a whole-school assembly. The other positive piece is that we've heard kids using the, the language of our lessons in the hallways. My social worker, I was talking with her today, and her office is in a spot where she hears lots of conversations out in the hallways, and she actually hears kids reminding each other of these, of these different character education pieces, and are you following the Wolverine way? Are you, what PAWS characteristic is that? So that's been a really fun and unexpected, unexpected thing that has grown out of this. So we're really looking forward to doing this, continuing in this method going forward, and we're excited to share kind of this format with other, other buildings. And, and that's, that's the piece about these sharing of ideas and really getting ideas from each other's buildings, so. And, and a little shout-out, thank you, Woodbury Elementary staff for coming to support, because they, part of the leadership team, we talked a lot, about a lot of different ideas of, you know, what do we want to share about Woodbury Elementary? Because, you know, in talking with other principals, every building has so many great things going on in their buildings that sometimes it's hard to pick. And this is one thing we felt really good about, that, that is unique to us and is really important to us, and it's important to us to instill these characteristics in our kids. So, any questions that you have?
Well, I just want to say thank you again for all of the great, amazing things. It's so great to see all the character education happening at our schools and citizenship. I'm excited about that one with my line of work. So anyway, want to thank you for all the, it's been great touring over at Woodbury L. and seeing all the great things everybody's doing, and thanks to the staff for coming tonight, and what an exciting time to be an elementary student with such awesome principals. So just want to say thank you for this update.
Anyone else?
Could I just ask as far as implementation and seeing how the collective group of kids in the school are doing, say with behavior and things that you might have seen before you launched, are you feeling that it's, it has traction? I think it's interesting to hear the kids talk about it, you know that they're thinking about it, and I'm wondering about the, the other elements that you might track and what is this meaning, what, how does it affect the kids going forward?
I think, you know, overall, we see, we've seen a decrease in, in kind of big behaviors. You know, we still have, we still work very hard on, you know, bullying prevention and being kind to each other, but I do think over the course of time... being kind to each other. But I do think, over the course of time, you know, our climate team has really worked hard on, on interactions in between students. And I would say, overall, our referrals, our referrals have gone down, especially for those bigger behaviors. It would be interesting, it's hard to tell which piece we're doing, because we're doing a lot, you know, we're doing a lot with morning meeting and building those relationships and connecting with kids and doing restorative practices by, by having kids work things out and bringing them together to solve those problems and, and, you know, logical consequences and apology of action to repair those relationships. So I think because, I can't say that this particular thing alone has taken care of things, but I think it's a combination of all of the things that we're doing throughout the school to really promote kids being kind to each other and empathetic and being good citizens.
And I didn't mean to, to say that that data has to be there for this to work, because being in both of your schools, the culture is positive. And watching kids in the lunchroom and then talking to, to staff in the schools, I feel like it's just a wonderful place to be. I think it is in all of our schools. But I appreciate the work. And I was just curious on as, as you look at the three-year and the elements for kids to see teachers when they see their stories and their background, I think is just, is wonderful.
Are you guys happy construction's done on the other side?
Well, Woodbury Elementary's going to undergo a little construction with Upper Afton Road this summer, which could prove to be interesting. But yes, we are really close. You know, we're only 12 feet away from Woodbury Middle School now. Dr. Jacobus and I went out and measured last year.
We didn't think a truck could go through it. It didn't look big enough.
But no, the, the new addition to Woodbury Middle is amazing. And they have some great new space. And it is nice to have all of that done, so all of our entrances can be open again.
Well, thank you so much for sharing what you all are doing in your buildings. It sounds amazing. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us share.
8.0, information items. 8.1 is our negotiation update with Sharon Van Leeuwen.
All right. South Washington County Schools is committed to providing regular updates for the collective bargaining agreement negotiations with the United Teachers of South Washington County, U2TSWC. The district and the UTSWC, what an acronym, I like that, share a common interest. The success of all students, and we are committed to working together to reach an agreement that will benefit our students and those who contribute to their success. The negotiation committee members and the UTSWC met for the third time on April 4. At that meeting, the district presented a contract proposal to the members of the UTSWC negotiations committee for consideration. The district also responded to initial proposals from UTSWC. The district committee members and the UTSWC members will meet again on April 24. We will then give an update at the April 25 school board meeting. The district will also continue to provide regular updates as the negotiations discussions proceed. Information can be found on our website at southwashco.org under the School Board section. That ends our report.
Thank you very much. 9.0, our discussion items. 9.1 is the first reading of policies 406, 418, 423, 424, 427, 510, 524, and 713. Our Assistant Superintendent Mike Johnson will present.
Good evening, Chair Brunet, board members, Dr. Jacobus, and Cabinet. This first reading will be slightly different. Attached in your documents would be the eight policies. These are considered by the Minnesota School Board Association, non-substantive changes. And what that means is, these changes reflect updates to legal and cross-references, statute or any numbers, names, rules, cases, changes to the notes, and very, very minor corrections. The substance of the policy language is not affected in these. I had shared this information with these eight policies from, with Sharon Van Leeuwen, Heather Hirsch, and Michelle Whitty. They had reviewed these and gave permission to, to share tonight. Current policies are located online. After the first reading of these policies, administration would seek approval at the April 25 board meeting. I'm not going to go through all eight of them, just because they are so minor and, as MSBA says, non-substantive. What I would like to share with you, though, for example, in discussing policy 713, Student Activity Accounting with Dan Pine and Chris Blackburn, there will be some major substantive changes to that. Chris has been preparing the middle and high school office coordinators, purchasing agents, activities directors, just what's coming down the pike, so to speak. So we will be getting MSBA language and model policy within the next couple months. So probably by June, we will have that one with some serious substantive change. But Chris was just prepping us over the past couple weeks with that, just to inform you. So, once again, these eight very minor changes, and then hopefully, we could get approval at next week's second reading.
Any questions on any of the policies presented?
I just have one, just quick things. So I just want to thank Mike, too, for all your work on giving these, getting these policies to us and helping us work through them. And on that 713, on the Student Activity Accounting, too, I think if they're going to go substantive changes, it would be great to talk about, you know, how we, because one of the things we talked about when we updated the, this year, the policies for what the fees are, for being able to see the connection between what, you know, what we're bringing in and what we're putting out according to activities. So I don't know if that would be a good time to look at that while we're making those kinds of changes. But I just kind of want to put that out there, because that was kind of new information for me to dig into. And just want to thank you for all your work on that with, within the high schools. And, you know, again, our goal to try to get equity in activities around all the schools. I think this will be a great opportunity to kind of take a look at that.
No, thank you. As you know, we've, we've met with Chris, and especially at the high school with the activities directors. It's, it's really, the, the main changes would be those student activities not under board control. And, but I think we've discussed your wishes, as well as, I brought that up to Chris, so I think that would be, that would be good to include in that next, like I said, more of a substantive review, probably in June, so that we get it ready for July 1.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And I think, Mike, when, when that comes, you know, the one thing I'll be looking at, because that's usually where we get a notice from the auditors. That's usually we get, what's it called, a write-up? I always, it's not a write-up, it's a finding. It's always a finding, you know, that we, the accounting part of it. So they always say, that finding is pretty much, happens in every district. So if we can try to put some more meat behind it that can help eliminate that and be the first district to not have a finding in that area, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on any of the policies that we're speaking on tonight? All right. Seeing none, we will be back on April 25.
Thank you.
10.0, our action items. 10.1 is the approval of instructional time for weather closure. Superintendent Keith Jacobus.
Thanks. I think I can, with confidence, say winter may be over. I don't know if that's true.
Don't even do that.
As you know, it's been a difficult winter. And, and based on that, we have closed six times this year. Some of the outstate districts have closed up to 11 times. And, and so the state took a look at what that might mean in our yearly requirements. So based on our yearly instructional hour requirements that are set forth by the Department of Education and the guidance we receive from the state regarding the statute passed this year to grant school boards the ability to count needed weather closures as instructional days, I'm bringing forward a recommendation to count three days of our closures, January 31st, February 20th, and April 11th as instructional time for the 2018-19 school year.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
So moved by Katie and second by Sharon. Any questions or comments? I guess we have the legislature, legislature to think. Otherwise, we'd have some scrambling to do, maybe.
And I will tell you that this, we will not be in this position again, as we've looked forward with the calendars that you approved and, and some other things that are in place. So even if this becomes a typical weather year, we've changed some things going forward. So this is a unique situation. I think that's what the legislature recognized as well.
Absolutely. I remember closing even a day, let alone six. All right. So if there are no questions, comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 10.2 is the approval of release of probationary teachers. Director of Human Resources Kevin Witterspoon.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight to seek approval for the termination of probationary teaching contracts. During the 2018-19 school year, as in past years, we have many exceptional teachers working for the school district. It's necessary to pass a resolution to terminate the teaching contracts of a number of probationary teachers. The reasons for release include student-driven scheduling, changes in enrollment, curriculum changes, union contract transfer article language, licensure issues, and performance issues. Honored before April 11th, you will receive the non-renewal, renewal letters of the probationary teachers who must be released at the end of the school year. That is in your packet that you have with you tonight. The resolution terminates teaching contracts at the end of the 2018-19 school year with non-renewal for the 2019-20 school year. The administration recommends approval of this resolution.
All right, thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Oh, moved.
Second. Moved by Sharon, second by Katie. So no discussion or questions. This will be a roll call vote. Pat Driscoll?
Yes.
Heather Hirsch?
Yeah.
Sharon Van Leeuwen?
Yes.
Katie Schwartz?
Yes.
Michelle Whitty?
Yes.
Ron Cath?
Yes.
And Tracy Brunet?
Yes.
Thank you. 11.0, reports and comments. 11.1 is our superintendent's report.
Thanks. I want to just a quick report on, on this week. In fact, we had a public presentation that, on social media and kids. And Erin Walsh, who is a nationally respected and known expert on working with kids and social media, she works around the country with schools and school districts and other youth organizations to talk about what does this mean and how to help parents navigate the really changing landscape of social media and how that affects them as they, they grow up. And certainly, as educators, we spend a lot of time with the aspect of social media as, as we work through things with kids as well. So I just wanted to have a presentation, and I wanted to just highlight a few points. Ron and Pat were able to attend on Monday night, too, and we had a great response from our parents. But Erin starts out talking about that social media isn't bad, or is it, it's not bad or good. You don't want to categorize it either way. But it's very powerful, as we know. It has a lot of impact, and it really is enticing for both kids and adults. And she gave us some statistics that, on average, each week, that the time that she's tweens and teens, so it's, it's coming into the adolescent years, probably middle and high school, and you think of that, spend with media outside of school and outside of homework, the, the number of hours on average is 53. So 53 hours a week they're watching or involved in other media. And she asked the, the group if that was high or low in their opinion. She said, you know, "We might have reached about the highest level, because there's not that many hours in the day." So when you look at that, that throughout the week. Another stat is 4.5 hours a day, that's the amount of time each day that teens spend with their smartphones. And that can be whatever they're doing. A stat that was interesting, too, 37% around the country of two- to four-year-olds have TVs in their bedroom, or some type of device that would act as a screen. And about a fourth of our children go online, a fourth, I should say, of children age three go online every single day. So certainly, our kids are very well-adapted at using technology and getting involved with the social media. And, and so her, her guidance on, on this for parents are, there are three areas to really limit screen time. And one is during homework. And kids will talk about multitasking. And, and she reiterated what researchers have been saying for a long time, neurologists, that you cannot multitask. Your brain just switches quickly from one thing to another, but you're never there 100% in what you're doing if you're trying to do more than one thing. And that pull of if the, the phone buzzes, or you see the screen light up, that there's a message, is overwhelming, even for adults. And she gave the example of, if a mouse ran across the stage right now, we would all look, because our brain is attuned to look at novelty. It helps keep us survive, alive, I should say. And, and it's such a strong pull that kids can't, can't really do that. So talking to your children about phones off, devices are off during homework. There was an interesting question about music. Music is a little different. And for some kids that, and some people, that is, is a different stimulus that they, they're able to then concentrate. But it's not, it's not like that draw. And she gave the example, too. If any of your phones buzzed right now, you'd have, you have a hard time not wanting to see who is that and what that is. And when you think about a kid, a teen or a high school student, I should say, it's really tough. The other place is eating. So you have that social time. And we, we talked about the, the meal challenge in our district, trying to make sure that, that with those questions stems that families had a chance to talk with each other and that face-to-face relationship that is so important. And then finally, at bedtime. Because, again, the, the light that's emitted from devices helps wash out your brain's cascade of, of compounds that help you go to sleep. Kids can't, if they're going to sleep and the phone is buzzing again, you're going to, to pull, pull that or pull them out of sleep. And a lot of kids talk about, they use it for their alarm. And she mentioned that you can buy these devices that actually keep time, and they ring when you want to get up. So you don't have to use a phone. She was wonderful, and it was a great evening. We also asked parents who were there if they wanted to sign up to stay in the conversation as we continue to look through how we support our kids in their social and emotional well-being around not only social media, but all aspects of growing up in today's world. So we'll, we'll let you know as we move forward with the next steps.
Thank you very much. Very cool. 1.2, school board member reports. We'll start with
Okay. Well, I had the pleasure of attending East Ridge High School's Fine Arts Extravaganza and experiencing all the makeup, makeup, the live music and the artwork. And I bought a coffee mug that I just love, and a little picture that a student did. But we have some really talented students there. It was really fun, and I enjoyed that. The second thing is, I'm working with East Ridge High School kids on the Relay for Life. I'm helping find donations for the silent auction. So I'm working with a group of ladies.
Thank you. Heather?
Heather.
Michelle?
Couple things. One, I wanted to give a shout-out to, to Bob and CE for all your work on the new Oltman Theater. It's really fun to see how available and accessible that building has already become to, I'm working with another community group that's going to be in there. And I know there was another community group just in there. And Nicole Hughes, who's the head of that, just won an award for her good work. So thank you for all your work to keep all of our theaters alive and going. And it's great. Last night, I had the chance to go to the Equity Alliance Group and the Youth Executive Board there, which was phenomenal. It was very disheartening, of course, to hear the stories of racism that so many children across our state and schools still encounter. And nothing we didn't know, but when you hear it directly from them, it is always still challenging and to know the work we have to do. But in our students in South Washington County, we saw a lot of students there. There were, I think, six or seven students. And they were really great in terms of talking about what we're doing with our cultural liaisons. So again, back, you know, Christine, I think that program really stands out to me when we're with other school districts, too, because then I, you know, really ask them to how, you know, that is where they're really receiving so much connection and feel safe and supported. And there's so much programming. So it was really great to interact with those kids, to learn some things. I think the big... I think the big thing we talked about was, you know, we're making a lot of progress with our staff, but what about our, you know, even students and curriculum, how are we addressing the issue of racism, and those things within our curriculum? So, that was another good, kind of, what I said I'd come back and ask good questions about. And then I also, because I'm always a super fan of our nutrition services, but they all were eating vegetables and talking about how much they love vegetables, and that's their favorite thing at our schools. So, I mean, when do you see that? You know, to have, I would have, you know, that's just so amazing still to me, this little, this little conversation from our students about how much they enjoy all the vegetables we have at our schools. So, I love those opportunities and really want to thank them for inviting me, because that was a very great evening. Thank you.
Apparently my son was not there, talking about vegetables.
Yeah, a couple things. One, actually, Michelle and I attended the listening session at the alternative high school, and it was, it was an interesting dialogue that we had from the standpoint, as I complimented the staff, because it's probably our smallest high school, right? But I'm telling you what, that was well-attended. We had that little cafeteria pretty full, so it was nice that all the staff came out and shared their thoughts with us. The one thing that came forward, and I know Dr. Jacobus is already, hopefully we're going to react to it, because I was caught off-guard, both Michelle and I, about the food. We should never have that school being treated any differently than the food that's being prepared fresh at our other high schools, because their food is being shipped in. So, that was really an eye-opening, you know, here for us, that we definitely want to, you know, address moving forward, so that all our kids, and it was brought up in the ACT Committee too, so, you know, the kids are bringing it up too, so it was great to have that dialogue brought forward. And just a couple other points on the Erin Walsh presentation that Dr. Jacobus spoke about. First of all, it was well-attended. I was impressed with the amount of people, even our civic leaders that showed up and wanted to learn more, I thought was really good. Couple of the notes that I took away was, one, she was honest and obvious, she said, there is no silver bullet here. You know, it's going to take all of us to continue to keep working, because it's all new. It's new to us, and it depends on what generation you're in. And the thing I took away as a parent is leading by example. How often are we telling our kids, no phones when we go to bed, but what do we do? We bring our phones with us, or we're sitting here at the dinner table texting and doing stuff. So, I think we have a real leadership opportunity as parents and as adults to lead by example for asking our kids, and if we quote-unquote see these issues. The other thing that I thought was kind of interesting is the, she talked about gaming, because there were some questions around gaming, you know, kids that are into gaming, and she said, actually, the way kids socialize, if you got at least kids playing against other kids, even though they're doing it through their fingers, at least they're interacting with other kids. She said, well, you really want to pay attention to is if you have a child who's gaming against themselves, where they're building their own creative characters. That means they're not interacting with other folks. And I took that away, just thinking, because I, my son was one of them, that showed up when all his high school buddies came over. Everybody brought their PlayStations, and they were down there, and they're, you know, it looked like they were putting together a rocket ship, but they were interacting differently than we are, and I see it even with my son today. He's got friends that live all over the United States, and they can get together and play a game against each other, and I hear them talking to each other and stuff like that. So, maybe it's not a physical activity, but it is an activity that our kids are learning skillsets to build friendships. So, I really enjoyed that session, and it was, I appreciate the district bringing that forward too. And I would ask parents when those kind of opportunities come forward again, to definitely take advantage of them.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, I see my little granddaughter, when she grabs my phone, she's got two thumbs on there already, she's watching her dad. I know. Unfortunately. Katie? Sharon?
Well, the only thing I did do was to attend the National School Board Conference, and I focused, oh, I'm sorry, and I focused primarily on some of the issues of equity and integration, of course, and safety. And some, one of the things that I, one of the takeaways is that how, some of the strategies and current trends and researches and best practices around equity, and the question, why does equity inequity still exist in our schools? But it's around the country. And the other thing, of course, what is it, safety? How social media plays a role in how our kids come to school? How, and the bullying and all that stuff that takes place on social media, and the laws that have not caught up with how we address those and the perpetrators? So, it was very interesting in learning about those kinds of things. And then the other thing, two shout-outs, one to Christine and one to Trina. What an excellent job. Our kids are really talking about some of the work that we're doing around diversity, and I'll tell you, this is the other shout-out, and some of our kids from Woodbury, I think, Park and East Ridge were home and they, from, for spring break, who went to college, how we prepared them to be successful in their first year of college. And I mean, they are successful, some of them are on the dean's list, and they went to HBCUs, so, shout-out.
Thank you. So, I was like, super lucky to go to East Ridge when they had the three-point NCAA contest, you know, with the high schoolers. So, it was super fun to see our students being part of the show, and obviously our students who were able to compete, and I actually caught it on TV like, last Sunday, so I got to see the edited version, but it was very, very fun, and the kids did an amazing job, so. 12.0, future meeting dates, 12.1, Thursday, April 25th is a regular board meeting, and then May 9th is also a regular board meeting. So, unless we have something additional, we will adjourn.